Okay, public hearing. For the Gearhart City Council, City of Gearhart, for a GZO amendment R2, Section 3.2, medium-density residential zone, R2 to C1 Zone, Section 3.4, Neighborhood Commercial Zone, C1, using 5,000 square feet, C1 Floating Zone established by Ordinance Number 860. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, and continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies the applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to riot, failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue includes appeal to the city council or the Land Use Board of Appeals, or distinct damages in Circuit Court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission or the city council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence and testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. Does any counselor need to declare conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or personal bias?
No.
No.
No. I did go to the establishment two weeks ago.
Right.
That's true. That's not a conflict.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to challenge the council's ability to make an impartial decision? Okay. Moving on, Chad, will you give us the staff report? Or is Garrett here?
Garrett is here, and I'm going to defer to him because he is the professional in this matter.
I'm sorry, Garrett, please, would you read the staff report then?
Sure. I will give you a summary of the staff report, and I'll be available to answer questions and elaborate based on your questions. So the proposal and request is to rezone just 5,000 square feet of the subject property from residential to neighborhood commercial, C1. Essentially to, you know, at least for the foreseeable future, enable the existing use of that property to continue. So the existing use is outdoor seating for the wine shop, which is classified as a neighborhood cafe under our zoning ordinance. And the owner is seeking, you know, clarification that this really is allowed there, and that it will be treated as an allowed use into the future. And the zoning, the rezone request will clarify that for them if it's approved. And and so in the future, if if the property is rezoned to C1, there are some other uses that could be could be permitted there theoretically that aren't that aren't permitted now under R2. That being said, there's some important realities about about this property and the adjacent property that the POPS building is currently on. And and it's that the subject property has the septic system for the adjacent building. So really, unless both properties were redeveloped and reconfigured comprehensively, this property is committed to being sort of an accessory and supporting use for the adjacent building into the future. And this rezoning essentially acknowledges that and and rationalizes the current situation. And it makes sense from staff's perspective. The planning commission recommended approval. It was a relatively easy recommendation for them to make, it seemed. They had some clarifying questions on on technicalities. But they found that the the rezone request should be consistent with the policies in our comprehensive plan, and that it met the other criteria for a rezone. We had several people testify in the planning commission meeting in support of the rezone request. And we didn't have anybody testify in a neutral manner, and nobody testified against the rezone request. So there weren't new pieces of information coming from the public that we had to address there in the hearing or since the hearing. Ultimately, it's your all's decision whether or not to approve it. The findings in the staff report would support approval of the rezone. It is totally up to you whether or not you want to approve it. If we find new information in this hearing that that calls the wisdom of that recommendation into question, we would write write those findings up and support whatever decision you make. So I think that those are most of the main points I wanted to make. You know, I'll comment on the idea that this is a floating zone amendment. So to summarize that concept, the city several years ago approved a rezone that removed C1 zoning from the city's zoning map, right? So there was a property that was zoned, C1 Neighborhood Commercial in downtown Gearhart, and the city council removed that zoning and wanted to ensure that that amount of C1 zoning would be available for somebody else to use in the future in downtown Gearhart. And that that desire, that intention was made in coordination with the State of Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development because we are supposed to have a certain amount of commercial zoning in our city to support a certain amount of employment in our city. And so they were interested in us not completely losing and removing that square footage of C1 zone. We also, in our comprehensive plan, are somewhat unique in Gearhart in having policies that really discourage adding more commercial zoning to the city, or being very specific about under what circumstances we would ever want to add more commercial zone into our city. And so part of the intention with that ordinance, 860, establishing 5,000 square feet of C1 floating zone was to clarify that, yes, in this case, we are reserving this C1 floating zone, and we we will be using it somewhere in downtown Gearhart in the future. So that opportunity has come. We did, you know, the applicant approached the city about doing this. Given the fact that there is only 5,000 square feet of of C1 zoning available until the comprehensive plan changes something about that. It's sort of like a unique opportunity. And so when when the applicant approached us, we said, we'll process this application, but we also need to give other property owners an opportunity to apply. And so this was a little unconventional, and that before we even processed the application, we put out a public notice inviting others to apply. And we got several inquiries, but no one ultimately decided to apply for the zoning other than the applicant themselves that's here before you tonight. So I think that's about all I wanted to summarize for you, some of those key points. As far as adding C1 zoning anywhere in our downtown, this seems like a relatively appropriate location to do so, adjacent to existing C1 zoning across the street from existing C1 zoning. To the west is residential zoning, but it's it's a vacant lot immediately to the west. So in terms of managing impacts in the surrounding area, it doesn't necessarily get much better than that. So in any case, I'm happy to answer any more questions that you might have, and dig into any of the findings that you might want to look into more. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Does anyone have any questions about the staff report? Then we'll interact, Garrett.
I do. Hi, Garrett. So in a C1 zone, it says manufactured dwelling is allowed. Is that correct?
One moment, let me read for myself here. Please. Neighborhood grocery markets, barber salon and spa services, arts and craft gallery and studios, government facilities limited to a post office, offices, and a manufactured dwelling would be permitted as well. And the manufactured dwellings are also permitted in the residential zones. So that would be permitted currently under R2 as well. I'm going to double check myself on that, but pretty clear memory of it.
Okay, and then I just wanted to clarify, I thought I saw some in some of this literature that a neighborhood cafe is supposed to be open 11 months of the year. Is that also correct?
The audio was a little bit garbled, but is it right that you're asking me whether a neighborhood cafe is supposed to be open 11 months of the year?
Yes.
One moment, excuse me. Yeah, the neighborhood cafe, so a neighborhood cafe, as it's described in the C1 zone standards, does not have any language about how many months of the year that it's open.
I think that might be an artifact from the way that the code was written. And then it was changed under Mayor Brown, and I think, why not, you were there as well, to add more, and so is Carrie, to add more features. And I think they took that out at that time. But in the previous paperwork for the variety store, or excuse me, neighborhood cafe, it was added in because at that time it was part of code.
Okay, thank you.
Is that part of your paperwork that you've gone? Not updated?
Well, that is my little miss. It's in the introductory stuff.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I got it. Okay, thank you, Garrett. All right, I'm going to move on if there's no other questions about the staff report. All right, right now, we've got the applicant's report, and that almost sounded like you read that too. So are you, who reads the applicant's report? That would be Megan? Okay, are you going to read her?
Um, I have a statement prepared.
Name and address.
Yes, my name is Megan Asterson. My mailing address is POO OX 2113 in Gearhart, 97138. And I have a brief statement that I think captures my my application, if that works. First and foremost, thank you, both Mayor Smith, as well as city council members, for your time on this matter. And thank you to the customers and Gearhart residents who have joined this call and this meeting in person to support this application. Merit Maker is also joining the Zoom call, and he is my real estate broker and land use consultant, and is part of this application. I submitted this application because I feel that it will allow me to augment the patio to better serve my neighbors and enrich the neighborhood commercial zone in downtown Gearhart. When I envisioned opening this space, I wanted to create a community hub. The outpouring of support from Gearhart residents over the past six months has been astounding and affirms that we've been successful in this vision. I'm now applying to rezone the patio lot so that I can continue to respond to the community's requests. Today's beautiful summer weather that we were experiencing earlier, I think perfectly captures by this rezoning is vital. Under my current zoning, I'm not able to make any permanent changes to the lot, and I'm hopeful that with updated zoning, I would be able to make relatively minor changes to better accommodate guests across seasons. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Megan. All right, so are you going to be talking when I call for proponents, or is that?
Yeah, no, that would be anybody in the audience.
Right, well.
Yes, I am a proponent.
No, I get that. It's just, are you going to make another statement is all I'm doing, because then I'll mark you off my list. Okay. All right, so proponents, anyone being a proponent and wishing to speak on this matter, please raise your hand on the screen. Nobody signed up here on my list. So. I don't see her.
Yep, Shelley O'Neil. And Shelley, if you want to unmute yourself.
Oh, you can see us.
And then if you could just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Shelley O'Neil, and my address is 201 Third Street in Gearhart, 97138.
Thank you. And just to confirm, you're a proponent.
I am a proponent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, performer, yeah. Go ahead, go ahead, Shelley.
I would just like to offer my insight, I guess, to to desires of Gearhart community, and how much we love and want this space to have a place to gather all seasons of the year, as well as outside on occasion, and be able to be served there in a way that didn't limit that from being taken from us in the future. I believe this is something that will help develop community in the city of Gearhart for locals that live there.
Okay, well, is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't really, I didn't really prepare anything like Megan did, so.
That's quite all right. All right, are there any other proponents in the audience? Raise your hand.
I didn't sign up, but can I speak?
I will allow that.
Oh, amazing.
Name and address.
Yes. Hi, my name is Heather Day, and I have a spot over on 762 F Street in Gearhart. And I'm a big fan of daughters, and it's wonderful to be able to walk my dog there. I'm looking forward to enjoying the patio at all seasons and having, I actually love the sprays, like the N A cocktails you have there, and also the wine, so thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, are there any other opponents, proponents? Seeing no hands raised. I'm going to go to opponents. Are there any opponents on the screen? Please raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. Are there any opponents in the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to neutral comments. Anyone in the audience with a neutral? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to the screen. If you've got a neutral comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none? I'll wait for the applicant's rebuttal to nothing but positive input. But I don't think that's necessary. Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing because there's nothing more to discuss. Anyone on the council wanting to discuss this?
I don't know if it should discussion as as much as, thank you for pursuing this because I think it's probably been a long time coming, although I I am sure that the people that live around you are hesitant. I'm also trusting that you have, you know, some empathy for the folks that are living around you, and that you are not going to start having Ozzy Osbourne concerts in your in your patio, but for having the courage to come forward and finally ask for something that has been such a point of contention for every business owner there forever. Thank you for having the courage to do this.
Okay. So we put you at the back of the list now. Okay. City Council meeting, August 6th is called to order. Is there any declaration of interest? Conflict of interest, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm not interested, I guess. No, anyone down here? No conflicts? All right. Let's go to the executive session meeting minutes, and someone give me a motion. All those with any discussion or corrections? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed? All right, let's go to the regular meeting for July 2nd, 2025. The what? I do not have that on my list of things that I need to, oh, and the territory, I got it. Excuse me.
It's just one second. Move to approve the minutes for the public hearing of regular meeting of the city council, Wednesday, July 2nd.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Can we discuss for a moment?
Oh, yeah, sure, that's.
Okay, page 6, line 11, it's David Attenborough.
Somebody wants to amend their motion. So we need to amend that motion with 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 changes?
Yeah.
Corrections? With a correction?
Yes. Move to approve the minutes from the public hearing of regular meeting of the city council, Wednesday, July 2nd, with amendment.
With a correction. Okay, now a second.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, is there any more discussion or corrections?
Thank you for finding that.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Everyone's got a copy of the planning commission report and paperwork? In minutes? Are there any questions to be asked of Chad?
No questions, just a comment. I I've been impressed by the last two sets, the last couple of months minutes from the planning commission and the discussions that they've been having, that they've been thoughtful with, and but it is, and I I know that we created a delay in order to try and improve the quality of the product that's coming to us. But it's still with that delay, it's still caught, just I just want to make a note that it, for me, I, if there's any way that in the future we could figure out a way to speed up the minutes so that we're not a couple of months behind, it would be awesome. But I, again, I appreciate the work, and I appreciate the the quality of the discussions that they're having. It's just harder for us to be timely in responding to to matters in time without directly inserting ourselves into their meetings, which would, I think, be inappropriate.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I don't have anything to report that I care about, so I'm going to go to council reports. Sharon?
Yes, so I participated in the July 5th beach cleanup, and the only reason I'm mentioning that is because I was incredibly impressed with the amount of residents that were out there helping to clean up the beach. It was very gratifying. An update on the Second Street property issue is that it is in progress to reach the point where that property will be preserved. That's all I can say about it at this point. Paulina and I moved emergency, city emergency cash from one location on High Ridge to a different location on High Ridge. And then lastly, I attended the airport committee meeting, in which we completed the bylaws and sent them to Seaside State Council.
Okay, thank you, Paulina.
I also did the July 5th beach cleanup. I wanted to say thank you to Dana and to the staff for such an organized approach to the Fourth of July weekend in general. Also met with Chad and the mayor with a survey consultant a couple of times, met with the mayor one time. As Sharon mentioned, we moved the cash that's on High Ridge Drive. I attended the Batz County Housing Task Force. That was primarily a presentation from the Oregon Housing and Community Services looking at they're looking at getting some grants within the county again for doing more work on the buildable lands inventory, specifically looking at city-specific opportunities. So that's also in the works, but hasn't been funded at this time. Also went to the LSC Small Cities President's Meeting, and that was a long discussion about revenue sources for cities because we, like many other small cities in Oregon, are strapped for cash. So that was a really excellent presentation and handouts, went over a number of kinds of of opportunity, as well as ways to reach your community members. Newer ways. That's all I have.
All right. Dana?
So, yeah, so again, reiterating what everybody else said, thank you so much to everybody who showed up for the beach cleanup. One of the things that came out of that is several of us out there on the beach were talking about how sustainable that is for us to continue to expect our community members to get up after a night of all night long being awakened by fireworks to getting up at 7:00 in the morning and going out there and challenging the people that are sleeping on the the beach, and how how long that's going to turn out to be, you know, a safe and non-combatant endeavor. What we really need is for the the state to step up and do their part in going out there and ensuring that the people that celebrate on the beach are safe and that they're not littering and whatnot. And so to that, we're to that end, I've been talking to some community members about creating, perhaps as a citizen, creating a letter that if other people wanted to sign with me, I could set up a booth out there at the at the post office and have people sign if they're interested in in supporting that effort. So that, keep keep your ears open for that, that's coming soon. I had a Cedar Board meeting, also met privately with Representative Cedar, and they wanted to talk about what they offered at Gearhart and reiterate their value to this county. A lot of folks don't understand Gearhart, sorry, I don't understand what Cedar does, not necessarily just for Gearhart, but for Gearhart citizens. For example, if you have a child that goes to school at the high school up there, and you're interested in having them develop
at the high school up there and you're interested in having them develop and enter into the beauty, the business community and and seek internships, Cedar is an avenue for them to do that. So while they may not be necessarily always doing things that are so obvious within Gearheart, the the services that we all enjoy outside of Gearheart in Platte County, they do assist in economic development throughout Platte County. And so we should be aware of that. They wanted us to be aware of that and they asked if they could come forward to another meeting to a city council meeting at some point in the future to talk more about that. Talked with several members of state elected officials and LSC. State is desperately looking for ways to make up the deficit that everybody's been hearing about. In the LSC meeting, they warned about the economic forecast and it is it is dim. It's dire. Cities should not expect money to help with serious infrastructure costs that haven't already been locked in for the next two years or beyond. And so it's it's very, very dim. One good news, one point of good news was that the TLT changes that everybody was seeking or we were so interested in this last session, those those fell victim to some political posturing related to the to the transportation plan. But they are expected to be revitalized and go forward and there is still a lot of support for that. So that may be something that helps us in the future. And then I spoke to a lot of a lot of citizens. I went to the July 4th fire, after the July 4th parade, I sat at the fire station and set up all of the the boards that we have had from the work, public work sessions and I talked to people about what do they mean? And I got a lot of really positive impact. I got some also, some some people telling me what they really thought about it. It was it was a good endeavor and I'm glad that I I did it. I normally start off my comments with an attaboy or a shout out to people that did something well and I forgot to do that in this instance. I want to point out that about I I want to say something good about the fire department. Many may not be aware and I'm going to share with you some stuff that I saw in the Platte County Facebook post and that was that there was a response to Marion about a month ago, month and a half ago, and a subject was essentially not responsive when our folks arrived on scene. And shortly thereafter, after all, our folks were on scene, this person was well enough to go to the hospital. So that tells me that our fire department responded to a critical medical emergency and did what exactly what we would hope that they would do. And then just shortly, about a week ago, we had a fire on South Ocean Avenue and our county worked together in the way that they're supposed, our emergency response network is supposed to do and everybody responded. Because we do not have a fire station that is large enough to house ladder trucks and ladder trucks are really critical to the successful outcome in a structured fire. Seaside was thankfully for us available and they rolled theirs and they were able to park out front. Everybody did exactly what they were supposed to do and not only was the house saved, but the neighbors around them were not impacted. And so I think that our fire department deserves a big shout out for that and I want to say thank you to them. But for those that would say, well, Seaside arrived first, that's that's not really an accurate saying and that that's there's so much so much nuance that I'm not going to go into here. But what I can say is that there are many times when Gearheart arrives first in Seaside or Warrenton or wherever and we all work together. And that is the way it's supposed to work. We all rely on each other and and there is no way that we could operate with Seaside going away, Gearheart going away, Warrenton going away. They all work together and I believe that. If you have anything to say after.
I have nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you. Hey Chad, before I go to the officer reports, did we stop the recording and restart it?
It is going.
It is going, okay, but we never did stop it?
I didn't stop it in between.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I went ahead.
Christie's so nice.
She's gonna be a little upset with me, but I think it'll work.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna go to officer reports and first off is Chief Gregory.
Good evening. Stats were completed. I believe I put a copy of each one on your area. Only thing that wasn't done was the vehicle mileage. We had a good job, so I just didn't drop that down. Everything else is there. July was busy, especially before that, as expected. But it went pretty well. Most of the firework hauls were on the beach. There wasn't a lot in town. We confiscated quite a bit of fireworks. I think what helped a lot was the preparation, obviously, the light aid, as Council, Council Dana mentioned. All these agencies coming together, working as a team, knowing what each other is doing. I think it just helped out a lot. That being said, it was, I think we prepared for the worst. We just didn't get the worst. It wasn't as busy as I think we thought it would be, which is good. I'd rather be in that boat than the opposite. There were no DUIs in Gearheart and the cars that we did stop, stopped a lot of cars that night, all had designated drivers, so kudos to them. It's great to see that trend before paying attention. Sergeant Brown attended a detective level training this month in Solomoke, so it was good for him to go to after he did that. Reminder to everyone, this weekend is beach volleyball in Seaside and Regatta and Astoria, lots of traffic, so you gotta go somewhere, know that you probably should leave a little earlier than you normally would and just be patient while the tourists are here. We'll get Monday soon, right? Case files, we're eighty-one cases over where we were this time last year. If you look at 2023, we're one hundred and ninety-eight cases higher than where we're at. Having three officers is proving to be unsustainable. It's 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 a challenge. And I know that your heart fire has also increased their call volume quite a bit. I'll let him speak to that. So I I feel like we need to have a serious conversation in the near future of how we can adapt and mold, be able to handle these changing times because it's just getting busier and busier. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
So when you confiscated these fireworks, turn them over to the fire department?
No, OSP's law comes through every year after the Fourth of July, about a month or two later, they'll come through. We just hold on to them, they pick them up, take them and make them fill the bill.
You know, you're supposed to turn them over to the fire.
I agree with him.
I mean, it's a state law, you're supposed to.
OSP is always coming gotten from us, so.
Okay, well, you're supposed to go to this guy over here. I've had this, I've had this bone of contention ever since this fire case.
I'll look into it. I appreciate it. Anything else?
Not that he not that he needs any more.
Side note, way back in the day, we used to have the best fireworks show.
All right. To your call, man.
Thank you, sir. We weren't able to hundred percent get the full report for last month ready for you guys. That's why you don't have to print out all the call. But I was able to go through it enough to get all the stats from it from that. So we had a total of one hundred and twenty-two calls per July. Eighty was inside the city limits and thirty was in the district. We sent out aid twelve times. Two is the Seaside for fires, technical rescue in Hamlet, fire in LC. We had a little Cessna run off the runway at the at the airport, so we assisted the Coast Guard with that incident there. Four times we had to go to Warrenton, they needed extra manpower. And then we had a fire in Lewis and Clark and two fires in Astoria. We did not, as last month, we did not receive any aid. We didn't need any people to come and help us last month. July of 2024 had ninety-seven calls. Again, this year had a hundred and twenty-two. July 2024 ended on incident four forty-two and we ended this year on five forty-seven, so we're a hundred and five incidents above last year. So that, and then the two staff vehicles, you guys graciously approved, I think you did for those. Those are finally done and in service and we came in about twenty-seven thousand dollars under budget.
Good for you.
So that went well. And I echo everything Chief Gregory said about the fourth. It was busy, we could do a lot of preparing for that. And it was, I don't want to say anything that will hurt next year, but it was smooth. It went well. The fourth was was very well. We again kicked out a lot of people out of the dunes that was trying to start fires in the dunes, a lot of fireworks in the dunes. So we were patrolling along through there. Because of the OSFM staffing grant that we got, again, I had about seventeen firefighters on shift that day and about eight of those put in a twenty-hour day. We were here from seven-thirty in the morning until three-thirty in the morning with that. The morning went well, we gave out thirteen hundred hot dogs and then had all our other festivities deep at the station. Almost were patrolling, we're in multiple incidents. There wasn't any major incident on the fourth, which was really thankful though. We were able to, there was a couple of people that came to us, and I personally courtesy your eyes and we would rather have not get in a vehicle or staggered on the road, so we thought it was better we just get courtesy direct for that. Other than that, I think that's all I have, unless you have any question.
I just wanted to check. So you had about eighty calls last month in in your first, I think. Do you say a hundred and ten?
You had eighty in the city limits for July.
Like, do you have, talking ahead, so maybe you don't have the stats there, like, how much of that was medical versus small?
For last month, I'm not sure, but historically, every year that I ran the year of stats of how many is fire and how many is MDA, it's forty-eight to fifty-two percent is medical every year for the year total.
So an MDA would be none of.
That's that less, we tracked that totally separate. That's just that, because that's a different response, different apparatus and and different.
All right, oh, you get it, how? Thanks.
Perfect. The other previous years, the last three years was all on our website, under any reports, and it's broken down much further for each one of those.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next is Master of Money, Justin.
So this week's been a very busy week for me as we're getting ready for the city's annual audit. The auditors do request that I submit information electronically and of course I can't really get anything prepared, plus I have my regular job, so until after June thirtieth, so I have a short period of time to get the just collaborative data gathered up. So that's due on Monday, so I've been working on that. And then they will come here onsite and meet on August twenty-fifth, so if any of you are interested in meeting them, they'll be here. And they do an exit interview with Chad. Noteworthy in the financials are some of the city's annual fiscal payments. These include our property liability insurance to CIS, which increased five percent this year and it's charged to accounts general fund, the water fund and the street fund. Our workers comp payment, we paid in one payment in the month of July to save. It increased thirteen percent this year and it's put throughout the budget depending upon what the salary amount is, the job code and some other things. Some other annual payments for the LSC annual dues, which was in ten, ten fifty-nine. Some police software that we're using up through December until we're going to transition over into our new software, that's in ten, twelve seventy. A fire department software, which is fall first due, that's in ten, thirteen seventy-two. And volunteer firefighter accident insurance, which we pay to Knudsen, which was in ten, thirteen forty-eight. And unfortunately, that insurance policy increased thirty-nine point seven percent. So it is our, I believe it's our first over account this year in the line item. Because it definitely increased more than we thought. It it's about three thousand dollars, so it's not a significant amount of money. It's just that something we didn't expect to go up that much. Also, please note that the sheriff's office sent their May and June invoices in July. So on the check detail, there are two checks, well, two payments for our monthly retainer, but those were for the May and June payment that we didn't get until July. Also, the approved two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six salary schedule is implemented effective July one and that was a two point five percent increase. So that's also in the financial reports. Counselor Gould also shared, as she mentioned, going to the LSC with Counselor Cochran, the Oregon Local Revenue Tools Guidebook that was provided by LSC. And I was really excited to see a resource. It it's a great document. I haven't looked all the way through it, but liked what I've seen so far. It was really interesting that one of the project findings was that that cities all face the same revenue problems, but there is not a unified voice. And I think that's really interesting because it's oftentimes when you compete with rural and urban cities, but I think the basis of trying to find revenue sources is often the same. So I am hopeful that they'll continue these discussions collaboratively and that maybe, you know, cities and affiliated organizations and legislators will start, you know, finding some common links for all cities to maybe get some traction and some new revenue sources and hopefully not necessarily just taxing our residents. I also wanted to mention that there was late correspondence submitted by a local resident, so that's not, wasn't in your packet, but is online now. And that particular local resident did request some specific information and I I have been emailing back and forth with this person and they've been very helpful and nice about what they're wanting. Although I'm not going to be providing a presentation as they requested tonight, I am providing some information that was distributed, so I put it at your place and I will put it in late correspondence with his email so that the public has access to it. It looks like this. And then it has a, just a generic template that was provided to us by our rating company. This isn't something I created. So I just want you to know that the city staff deals that reserve funds are essential. That that was one of the key pieces that this person was interested in. And we really try to make a priority and make them essential. However, because our expenditures are outpacing our revenues, the city has had to reallocate some of our resources, so we haven't been able to support those reserve funds like we want to. The priority is providing essential services and unfortunately, the city doesn't have a lot of extra resources to contribute to these reserve funds. I did also want to mention that it is accurate that under the methodology for rating US governments, which is in in the information I provided, reserve balances are a factor in determining the city's credit rating, which does play a role in the process of when you give a general obligation bond, how desirable and that you are to borrowers. It's also accurate that at the last rating review done by standards and pores, the city rating was lowered one notch to A from an A plus, which is still a very strong rating. And one of the credit factors noted was that the city's nominally thin reserves. Again, city staff take this seriously. However, we also have to balance operating financial stability, which has put a strain on allocating resources to reserve funds. So we we want to improve our rating and we don't want to see it decrease, but we also can't really sacrifice a lot of the things that we consider essential services. So we are aware, talked about it in the budget committee, we talked about it. It is important and we'll do everything we can to try and support those reserve funds. All funds that went to the Public Safety Building Project came from Fund Seventy-Nine, which are, which is our building reserve fund. And we're charged in account seventy-nine, seventy-nine zero zero, Public Safety Consultant Project. All of these transactions for this project were listed on the appropriate check detail, so every month we submit something. Every time there was a purchase, it would have given the vendor's name and it would have given a dollar amount. And it it collaboratively grows each year on our financial, each month on our financial report. So none of those numbers were hidden in any way, so I don't want to give that impression. each month of our financial report. So none of those numbers were hidden in any way. So I don't want to give that impression. And you can go back and look at them and you certainly can call me if you have any questions and, and I'm working with this person. So this is what they wanted. They wanted ending fund balances, which are on our audits on our webpage. I simply just took them straight off with them and then, um, showed just some kind of graphs. The problem that's misleading with this and that we probably could have a whole, you know, financial review on it is that there's things that happen in here, like the police car. We purchased the police car. So the reserve fund drops. We purchased a, two new vehicles for the, the fire apparatus. So it drops. Uh, this curve in our general fund, we all know it. Uh, standards and pores noted it in their thing. We got a, our, a American Rescue Fund. So our revenue increased artificially from federal money that we received. Um, so it looks like it went up and then down, but really we knew that the money was good. Anyway, so.
Just to piggyback on what you said in the LLC meeting that, um, Paulina and I attended. They said that, that two thirds of cities in Oregon are expected to be in deficit this year or next year. Um, and it, it, people don't understand because we're all required to keep balance budgets, what that means, but essentially it means what you just said, that, um, we're struggling to, we're going to keep the balance budget. You know, the budget balance, but it's the services that take a hit. And, and people want more services while remaining at the same amount of pay. And it's just, it's, something's going to happen.
Anyone else?
Just a quick clarification. Uh, it seems like I remember that the bond rating that, uh, going from A to A minus was also part of their process of re, uh, they re-criteriaed.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. What it takes to be an A is kind of, yes. It wasn't something we did.
It's nothing we did. They simply changed the methodology and then they went through the methodology and selected, um, not arbitrarily, but selected because of the process, which a lot of rural communities were selected and government agencies, and they reevaluated those ratings. Um, and just simply as the methodology of how they're calculating it, Gearheart, did not perform as well. Nothing that we did impacted that other than who we were and a new method, new calculation.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Justin. All right. We're going to move to city attorney and the introduction is, hello, Chad Jacobs.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chad Jacobs and I'm from the law firm Barry Elston-Hamid. And I'm happy to be here to serve as your interim city attorney as you go through the RFP process. Um, you know, Peter was a good friend of our firm. We worked with him for many, many years. He shared office space with us. We've collaborated with them for many years. So, a- and we know Chad as well. And so when Chad called and asked us to step in as an interim, of course, we said, yes, we're happy to help out. Uh, we're, we're here until you guys can find a new city attorney. Um, a little bit about our firm, we're a firm of ten lawyers here in Portland, Oregon. All we do is government law. We don't take on any private clients. We currently represent about twenty-six cities as their city attorney, including some of your neighbors. Uh, we basically have all of our attorneys work with all of our clients. So while you, I may be a face that you'll see most often. It's possible, depending on the subject matter, that there may be another attorney from our office attending one of your meetings, if they've been working on a particular issue. For example, we have one attorney in our office who's a land use expert, who's been really working with your staff on land use issues, uh, in the couple of weeks that we've been on board. Um, so depending on the issue, you may see other people, but the, the whole idea is for our firm to be a, a city attorney's office that you might find in cities like Salem or Beaverton, um, for smaller cities who can't afford to have those attorneys in-house for themselves. So that's a little bit about us. Again, I'm really happy to be here. We've been working with staff. You've got a great staff. We've really enjoyed working with them so far. Um, we feel very lucky to be able to help you guys out during these, uh, sad times. And, um, if there's anything that we can do for you all, please don't hesitate to holler.
Thank you very much, Chad. Any questions?
Just a comment. The, these are the folks in Chad is exactly the, the attorney that helped us with our camping, um, ordinances, uh, was it last year? Was it last year?
I think two years ago.
Two years ago. Well, they've been working well. So thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, moving on. Chad?
Uh, I'll keep mine a little shorter. Uh, we're talking a lot about revenue sources for the city of Gearheart. And I just wanted to remind the council that that's something that we thought about talking about early fall. When things kind of slow down a little bit for the staff and then we can start getting into those conversations. So keep that in mind that we'll be discussing some of those options that you learned about and other items, uh, having to do with that. Uh, building department is doing well, but it is actually quite slow in the building department as far as new, uh, permits come in. Um, we are, uh, definitely lower than we were the year before, uh, in our incoming permits so far this year. And last year we ended up lower than the year before that, um, as a year in total. So things are, uh, kind of slowing down. We're not seeing a lot of building permits coming in. Apparently, uh, building costs are potentially flattening out a little bit and maybe getting a little bit better, but not by much. Uh, so I think it's just a function of the economy at the moment and people waiting, uh, to move forward. Um, and as well as, uh, less land to build on in Gearheart, uh, is also starting to be an interesting factor. Uh, in Gearheart for our planning department. So, uh, we'll continue to monitor and report on that. Uh, Public Works has installed all the water meters, uh, to replace all the old ones in town. They are finally finished with that project, I think minus two or three. Uh, which are some bigger meters that we're having to replace and a little bit more complicated. So that project is finally done. Uh, and that was a big project for the Public Works Department and the people that helped us along with it. Uh, we were pretty well getting ready to, uh, move into being able to do digital reading and then our digital reading system hardware, uh, for idle. And so we're waiting for some new hardware for that to come in. Uh, we've been using it as testing and things like that. And for some reason it just, uh, smoked. And yes, it is out of warranty. So uh, we've had it for a few years. So we're working on that now. Um, and then we'll be able to start reading wirelessly, testing that out and eventually going to complete wireless read. And, uh, no longer using the company that we use for the, uh, in-person meter by meter reads. Uh, so far over these last two weeks, uh, we've had quite a few tree permits come in. So there's going to be some work out there. Uh, over the last two weeks, I've always had about eight hours on tree permits, uh, to, uh, manage those. Uh, and I think they're going pretty well. Uh, and after that, other than what everybody else already reported, I don't have anything else at the moment. Does she have some questions?
Any questions?
Will the speedometer, electric speedometer thing be hooked up?
Yes. So the city just replaced those two speed signs. One of them is working, uh, on a solar panel. The other one is under a bunch of trees. So solar panel doesn't work. We're working with Pacific Power to get that connection done and just, uh, waiting on it at this point.
All right. Any other questions for Chad? All right, moving on. We're going to go to the visitor's section. And I have a disclaimer. Yeah, I've got that. I just need the disclaimer about visitors talking about something on.
Oh.
All right. Visitors, that's, um, Terry Graff, pickleball in residential zones. Name and address, please, Terry. You can do whatever you want. Song and dance?
I just spent four hours in the demo chair having deep cleanings, so. It was late May, early June. I was walking down Ocean Avenue. And as you know, there's an abandoned pickleball or pick, uh, tennis court there that hasn't been used for thirty years. And somebody was refurbishing it and I went up and asked the guy what he was doing. And he said he'd put in a pickleball court. And that raised a red flag for me. And so the June twelfth planning commission, I went and asked them if they would consider revising R one to prohibit pickleball in the R one zone. And I think there would be a lot of public support in Gearheart for this. The last time this came before the planning commission is when they wanted to add another pickleball court to the one that's existing. And I remember the planning commission, there were probably close to seventy letters that showed up in opposition. And then when we had the meeting, there was probably twenty, twenty-five people who spoke. And the pickleball people, as you probably know, went through their application. So I think there is support for doing this and I haven't heard any op- opposition. I know that this is only a pickleball noise issue. People have told me I want to ban basketball. I want to ban volleyball. I want to ban pick, uh, tetherball, badminton, whatever. We've owned a house on South Marion for thirty years. It backs up to a sports court. It has a basketball hoop there. And every summer, there's plenty of kids playing basketball. We've never complained once. It's not a basketball issue. It's a noise issue. It's pickleball. At the end of our street on South Marion is the old Young Life. And they had a full basketball court there. And every summer when the campers would come, they'd play basketball. They'd play volleyball. They'd play tetherball. We never complained once. This is strictly with me and an issue that has to do with pickleball. When I appeared at the planning commission meeting, they were very receptive to doing something. And they asked Chad to go out and do some research on the noise issue. And Chad went out with his meter. I don't know what you call it. And he came back and reported that if you're a hundred feet away from a pickleball court, it records seventy-three DVA. I don't know what a DVA is. I assume it's some noise. Thirty feet is seventy-eight DVA. The allowable DVA in Gearheart under your code is fifty-five DVA. This particular house has two houses, one on the east side adjoining, one behind it that's adjoining the property. There are two houses directly across the street or probably within thirty-five feet. And I didn't take it, tape measure, but I paced it off. And there's six other houses that are within a hundred feet of that pickleball court. Now, I think this pickleball court could be just a one-off. Because as you walk around Gearheart, you see a lot of double lots. And I think it's just a matter of time until somebody says, hey, I want to put a pickleball court in. So I think you have to get ahead of this. And when I say get ahead of it, I mean, to go back all those years. We came out of the forefront of short-term rentals, solve the problem before it really happened. This appears to violate the noise ordinance because it's seventy-something instead of fifty-five. But if you rely on that, it becomes an enforcement issue. And when I talk to Chad about it, I want to make a complaint when I hear pickleball, uh, down the street. He gave me a name or a number to call the office. But I know whenever I call the office, he's usually not here. He's out working somewhere. And he said, well, they couldn't find me. And then on the weekend when they would be apt to play pickleball, he gave me another number. I guess it's a police department seaside or something. So if it becomes an enforcement issue, it, it's a difficult issue to enforce. And Chad would have to go out there and get confrontational with the people who are playing pickleball. It would be bad blood between the neighbors because I'm calling and turning them in and they wouldn't like that. Um, just one last thing. If they want to play pickleball, we have public pickleball courts that they can walk two minutes away down the street and they can play pickleball. So what I'm asking you to do, um, is, well, I guess when I went to the planning commission meeting, they were reluctant to take that up. They, they really showed that they wanted to do something about this. They recognized the problem. And, and they were very receptive, but they didn't want to do something on their own without coming to you guys first. And I, I think they felt they got treated. That when the planning commission did something with treason came and then it, it kind of felt whatever. So they wanted, what I'm asking you to do tonight is either say, hey, we can take it up as a city council or refer it back to the planning commission where they can do all the research and all that sort of stuff and then bring it back to you. And to me, it looks like there are maybe three options. The first option is to do nothing, which I hope you don't do. The second option is to amend the R one to make it a prohibited use. Or when, uh, the plan, city planner, uh, did some research on places that had done this before. Uh, one that really caught my eye is they have, if, if two hundred and fifty feet from the property line, uh, there's other property, you can't do it. Over two hundred and fifty feet, I think it was up to six hundred feet. You could apply for a permit and then over six hundred feet, you didn't need to worry about it. And I think that might be an option because across the way, there are, uh, the way being the highway, there are a number of large parcels over there and they may want to put in a pickleball court. And if it wouldn't bother any of you. So that's my spiel. I hope you read my correspondence and, uh, have any questions that we have to answer.
I have one question, Terry.
Terry, we, we do have one question.
Can I just sit down?
Yes, you can.
Terry, uh, what do you suppose, uh, the effect would be if, if someone had enough property to put a pickleball, uh, court indoors, so in a garage, say, or a shop? Do you expect that that would, uh, quiet the whole noise issue?
Um, you know, I, I'm not a sound person. I, I really don't know. Um, but again, if you go down that road, again, it becomes enforcement. And you, you, I, I have this thing when I argue with my kids. If I say no, it's done. If you say maybe you lose the argument. And that's kind of like if you say, let's give it, you know, they can play so many hours a day or they have time period or play indoor, outdoor. It, it becomes an enforcement issue. And if you look on Google, Google pickleball is nothing but complaints, what people are trying to do because of the noise issue. And if somebody here wants to play pickleball, all they need to do is walk down the street and make them play. I, I really don't see a reason that you need to have a pickleball court in a neighborhood right next to other houses. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
So Terry, would you be okay with them having a tennis court there?
Pardon?
Would you be okay with them having a tennis court?
Oh, it's no, like I said, there was one basketball court. Tennis is not a, tennis is not pickleball. You know, like tennis is not an issue at all. Um, volleyball isn't an issue, badminton, tetherball, and it's that boing, 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 boing that drives you nuts. And if you see my correspondence, I, I did some research on pickleball sound and, and it says it causes amnesia, causes all these different things that are. That's my, my two cents worth. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Terry. That's very interesting. I'm a, not a fan of pickleball in residential areas. Unfortunately, it, um, is up to a counselor if they want to make a motion that we refer to the planning commission to come up with something on the R one, R two zones.
I'll make a motion. I, I live close to a pickleball court and we bought knowing that there was a pickleball court there. And that's a completely different matter from living in a house, buying a house in Gearheart where our lots are not overly large and then having a pickleball court unexpectedly move in next to you. Because it's not just the ping, tick, ping, tick. It's the ow, screaming and the oh, you know, it's, it's a lot of noise. It does not bother me, but it bothers my husband. And I can understand where that is something that could be a community issue. So I would make such a motion.
When Chad did his research, you know how he did the ping, ping, ping. He also did what he called celebrations. And they were also over the fifty-five DVA's.
Right. I just, I, I think that if we're, you know, if we have motion, other ordinances that regulate contractors from making noise that prevents people from, from enjoying their homes in, in peace and quiet, I think that this, I mean, along that same line, I think we should at least investigate it. So I make a motion. So the motion is to give it to the planning? To give it to the planning commission and ask them to, to look into it, make and advise us. Does that, does that sound okay, Chad? Or should we, do we need to clarify that more?
No.
Do you understand what we're saying?
Yeah, I think we understand what you're saying. It's to.
Yeah, I think we understand what you're saying, it's to work on and advise, work on some sort of ruling and advise the city council on moving forward with some sort of code to help with pickleball.
Okay. One more question for you. I, I walked past that address today, and it looks like it has already been resurfaced and restripped. Has it been restripped for, for tennis or for pickleball? I don't know the difference.
Well, it was my understanding, I think Chad told me this, that originally they said, hey, we're not going to put in pickleball, but they did strike for pickleball. It's a different color, I think it's a red, red stripe there as opposed to a white stripe.
I don't know if they ever promised that, they were thinking.
Yeah.
Well, and one more thing to, to make note about promises, they're all well and good. And these folks may be great neighbors and may only play once a week for the rest of the time that they're there. But you, once you, you know, if you don't do anything, then they have the right to then sell it to a house that may, they may have pickleball all day long. So that's, that's what you have to worry about.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got something. Okay. Has anybody asked the new owners of the, of the DeSico tennis court whether or not they're going to put up sound barriers? I don't know. Think we ought to go down that path first.
No, we discussed it, and when the city looked into sound barriers and then conferred with the city of Lake Oswego and a few others, we found that the sound barriers were not effective. Almost no matter how much money is spent on it. Rather than you could build walls, but even then, the sound seems to permeate. It's a different sound.
I, I know what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it just seems to have the ability to go through things. So I think the mayor had asked the staff to look at the potential for putting up soundboard. We went down that path, found that it was somewhere near twenty thousand dollars to put up the highest quality soundboard that they had. And then the owner of the company said, it's probably not going to work with. So there just hasn't been any work to do that. I also know they're working on new paddles and new balls and trying to get that figured out. But that hasn't been the fruition yet. But that is one thing that the planning commission can look into and see if that would be a requirement they're doing.
Well, this particular court is right on the property.
I know it, I know where it is.
Yeah, it's not real here, so to put up a sound barrier and not really ensure that it's bubble or whatever. And it's also allowed to back through that house directly behind it to the joint.
I would be interested in hearing about the least intrusive way of protecting the neighbor's rights around them.
All right. Say aye if you want to send it to the planning commission.
Aye.
Aye.
It hasn't been seconded.
Yes, it has.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you didn't hear.
Sorry, thank you. You would revote, so I.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Against? Adstain?
No, I said aye.
Oh, I didn't hear you. It's a hearing problem.
So do I.
She heard me.
That's all that matters, then.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Yes. All right. We're going to move on. Public communications written in oral. Anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest not on the agenda may do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment electronically must be submitted by email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgerhardt.com no later than four PM the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. We're going to start with the sign-in people, and then we'll go to the TV people. John Mangan, is that correct?
I think he just left.
He might have just.
Actually, yes, I'm still here. And that is how.
There it is, I'm sorry, John.
Yes, that's okay. Thank you for calling on me, and I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. It was, the only thing I was going to do is.
John, uh, address, please.
Sorry, name, name and address, please, sir.
Oh, sure, John Mangan. Our address in Gerhardt is two-three-four South Ocean Avenue, Postal Mailbox two-zero-one-nine. And we've owned the house there on Ocean Avenue since nineteen fifty-eight. That's the year I was born. And I simply wanted to get up and, and echo some of the comments that Terry made. I support his correspondence to you, and I appreciate your willingness to send the issue about the pickleball court to the planning commission for a further review of some options. We're probably within fifty feet of that court. I will tell you that when Mr. DeSico was actually alive, we did play tennis on that court. And we didn't make much noise, because tennis doesn't make much noise. But we're very concerned about that, that constant irritating noise across the street. I know my neighbors are as well. And I know you've had a lot of complaints about the, the public portion. And I just, I'm glad that you're looking at this and considering how it will affect the serenity, kind of the, the residential peace and quiet of our neighborhood. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Well, thank you, John. All right. Robert, I'm sorry, but is it please?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Name and address, please, sir.
Robert, please. Nine-eight-six-eight-two. The city has my address. I'm here to contest my water bill. I've had the house in Beechwood for twenty years. And normally must, when I put in law, did I exceed the seventy-four gallons, seventy-four-hundred gallons that, that is required or included in the bill? So if you look at my statement that I handed out, you can see that the May period was, represented ninety thousand gallons for sixty-five hundred dollars, sixty-four, sixteen hundred. So obviously, this is a kind of a concern. I understand the situation, I write in a house diagram on the backside. We have a shut-off valve just going into the house, valve number one. And we have a shut-off valve going to the drip system, valve number two. Now, initially, we've had the old meter for this, for the May reading. And three days before the end of the period, we now have a new meter, which only indicates flow and non-flow. So, at any rate, we shut off the house valve, looked at the meter, and there was no flow, so the wine going to the house, it's good. Then we opened the meter, and there was flow. How much, I don't know, because. Really? So then I went into the house, shut off all the toilets, washing machines, went under the house, and there was no visible water flow in the water. So that indicate my solenoid valve, number two, was giving me the problem. And I removed one of the solenoid valves, one of the drip systems, and there was a small flow coming out. So I knew that the valve was, so this is the valve, cut it out, capped the system. And now we have no flow, and everything is off. So this was the culprit. So I hooked up a hose. Hand depot got a fitting, and hooked up a hose, and measured two cups of water for two and a half minutes, actually. And did it twice to make sure I didn't make a mistake. And you go through the calculations there, we're due about seventy-five gallons per day, seventy-four fifty every day. Now, the house, we'd normally keep the house valve shut off if we're gone. We only use the house about two months a year, and they're during fishing season, they plan to be in season. So, so normally this valve, the shut-off valve, to the house is closed all the time. But my son inadvertently left it open for twenty-four days. And in that twenty-four day period, the house was occupied for five weeks. But going through the calculations there, we had seventeen hundred eighty-eight gallons over twenty-four days. And I added fifty gallons a day for the occupancy. I have no idea how close that is to normal. But at any rate, we ended up with about two thousand gallons, or a little more, after measuring the leakage in this valve. So, um, what was interesting, I talked to my neighbor. My neighbor had exactly the same bill two months earlier. Sixteen hundred fifty dollars. These are home residents, full-time residents. And of course, it was on the old water meter. So since the roughly two thousand gallons that we estimated we used during that period is below the seventy-four-hundred gallons minimum payment, requesting that you grant the minimum payment, so currently, it's thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I'm willing to hand this over to the water department if they want to test the leakage on this valve. Valve's been in here for twelve, fifteen years. And I've always had it closed, so I never knew it was leaking. Any questions?
Did your son help pay any of the bills since he left the valve open?
And, and just to update you, Mr. Clays did put in for a water reduction. And we approved that water reduction based on the fact that he found a villain. So as soon as we find a problem and we can eliminate that problem, then ordinance allows me to give up to forty percent off of the bill. And that's what we have done so far, so that would be a total credit issue, just six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty cents. And Mr. Clays was just taken aback a little bit by that, and was hoping that the council would allow him to do more. I think at that, at this point, I need a little bit more information. That's the new mirror, and the old one, I don't want to spend a lot of time investigating this, because I just kind of came up with something new to look at here.
Men of the third is.
Men of the third is, okay, that's it. So there was some sort of leak, the water did go through the meter somehow, the meter looks like it's still working correctly. I'm not sure how much, how that amount of water actually leaked out, but it is not unknown. It's happened before, being on sand, it disappears pretty quickly around here. I, I can do one more investigation to really go through the data to see where we are at with the leak, and then continue to mark, to monitor Mr. Clays's meter to make sure that we did, in fact, get the villain, if you will, the broken piece. But we did give the total credit amount of forty percent based on the information that we had. If the council is able to authorize me to give more, if need be, or can authorize me to go back and take one more look at it and to monitor it. And if we do, in fact, have this solved, which I believe we do, then you could authorize me to give more of a discount or not. I believe it the way that it is. We do have a lot of people that come to us with these problems, in your heart. And we don't typically come to the city council asking for the discount. Generally, the forty percent is good enough, some people may grumble a little bit, but it seems to be working. So that's what I know.
Okay, so let's find out why his neighbor got the same bill.
That was a different situation, having to do at another time, that also had to do with some leakage, I believe.
It was.
Yeah, and we double-checked when we read the meter, we're not cross-reading meters with the neighbor, because that's something that we have, has actually happened before. And I don't think that's the issue, and I can dig into that a little bit more, but I don't think that there's some.
Okay.
I do want to point out, it was the old meters, not the new meters, that we're talking about.
Sure.
Yes, I believe that was a problem, but generally, they don't read as much water going through as the new meters do, they're less efficient. So we could have been losing even a little bit more based on the age of this meter. That is also an issue in what I think.
Preston, so do the new meters have a spire?
Uh, yeah, there's something similar, if it's not a triangle. Are you talking about the piece that moves to see that it's rotated or not? And then they are not as much of a mechanical paddle wheel as they are now using more a beam. So.
Okay, I had, I had a client, somebody that took care of their house, that was about a size. And they, they received a water bill that was, he considered outrageous. And I went and checked all the valves, every toilet, everything. And in the master bedroom, in the master bathroom, the toilet, it was leaking such a minimal amount that it didn't show up in the bill. Okay? His son actually found it. And then, I mean, I, I went there every day and monitored what the readings were. And, you know, it was, it was taken like somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five consumption units every single day, just a minor, small leak.
But now, my current meter, the new meter, just shows flow or no flow. And with everything open, and this valve removed, capped off, I have no flow on the meter.
See, so the spire isn't going around?
No spire cap, it's just a digital.
It's a digital reader that says flow or no flow now, so I was.
And, and just to clarify, this, this occurred in May, it looks like that's when your high reading was, and we've had a reading since then, and everything seems to be like you said, you did what you needed to do to fix it.
Right, this was the culprit.
Okay. Thanks.
So we're, we're talking two, two-thousand-twenty-five-hundred leakage, which is a long ways from ninety thousand.
Right, according to your calculations, I got that part. It, two-thousand-thirty-eight.
So Chad, wasn't there, I'm trying to remember when it was, maybe like three years ago, somebody came in front of city council? Do you remember that, gentlemen? Do you remember what city council did for him?
Uh, yeah, he was just overwhelmed with the bill, everything was correct. The, the city did everything right, they fixed the problem. And I believe that the council brought it down to what their normal bill would be for that particular period of time.
So they forgave him pretty much the entire amount, other than normal, you know, the forty percent.
Candace Reimer came.
The forty percent.
For the meeting, she had a vacation, and it was on and flowing, blocked.
And then there was one other instance where we had a gentleman come in.
She only got the forty percent.
Before that, that we did do somewhere before, but that was more than three years ago, I think.
It's great.
Good.
Remember, it's ninety thousand gallons in twenty-four days. Because the other time, it was all turned off.
Yeah, I, I did some math on that, a one-eighth inch pinhole, that's seventy-four KSI on the pipe, climbing twenty-four hours a day, seven days, and we pour in twenty thousand gallons of water for it. One-eighth inch pinhole, so about a pin that you can get from sticking your pen into a pipe. It's all time, and people have a hard time accepting a lot of times that that much water can go through their system. Landscapers especially, when their clients get their first bill. And they're going in there, so we're not sure, there wasn't any evidence of any flow throughout the property. It looks like we did get it taken care of, and we had given forty percent discount.
And why don't you get the cup, a copy of a couple of, you've had the house for how long?
Twenty years, sir.
So if we got a, a copy of the May bill for a couple of years?
So if we got a, a copy of the May bill for a couple of years, we could look at that and amortize the flow. I don't believe we can give everything back, but.
No, that's generally the way we would want to do it because sometimes in the summer, people do more water. So we want to average out that period of time with more water and then make sure that they're responsible for at least that much.
Right. So can we do that?
Is, yeah, with your blessing, I can do almost anything.
Does anyone want to bless you?
I think your suggestion's great.
Okay. Great, we'll go ahead and do that.
All right, thank you.
I, I just think the difference between this one and the other cases is, is the change of the water meter and that kind of throws a little. The other one, it was clearly, and we did everything we could for that person by turning the water back on when we shouldn't have and allowing them to rent out the unit and continue to waste water for the weekend and all of that. We did everything we could for them. And this is a different circumstance. Our, our meter has been changed. And I think tide goes to the run. We should be very careful with this one.
Yeah, we didn't, we did not pull that meter. It's gone. I mean, it's no longer in our possession. So we could not.
We can't prove or disprove that it was functioning or not functioning. That is correct.
So if we could have that valve, I'd love to have the VWs just put it on the hose and see what we get. But that's what we're going to do. Okay?
We're looking to anything.
Okay, and now we'll go to Mary. Are you happy with it?
Yeah. I just say word.
Okay, well, thank you, Mary. And now Bob Maury, you're up.
Yes. My name is Bob Maury. Address is two seven one D Street, Gerhardt, nine seven one three eight. Chad, I have empathy for Terry's situation. However, I had a lovely meeting with the owners of the children of the owners of that new sports court. It's a sports court. It has lining for pickleball. You aren't banning a pickleball court. Just ban the playing of pickleball in the city of Gerhardt. That's different than calling this a pickleball court. It is not. It's a sports court. It's lined for tennis. It's lined for pickleball. You can go out there and shoot hoops. You can do other things, but you are not into the pickleball court. And I, as a neighbor who went by a thing several times today, thanked them for the beautiful job they did, professional job with their sports court. Now, somebody else mentioned about indoors. If you call that indoor pickleball. I have a gymnasium. I brought some of our pickleball players down to say, go in and play pickleball inside the gymnasium, close the door. I'll stand outside and see if we hear anything. Do not come up with it. You cannot play in an indoor facility because we will come back to you here in the next several months for a scary, you know, city residential, you know, some kind of particular property. And I totally anticipate that somebody might want to come inside and play pickleball. Now you open the doors, you hear it. So be, be sensitive when you do that. But this family has owned that property where that sports court is for almost fifty years. They bought it with a tennis court. They actually sold their house to the north of it and then built that other house. And I'm going to meet the parents this weekend. And again, thank them for what they've done. They really did improve the local street. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we're going to go to Brad Bender. Name and address, please.
I think he left with Terry Graff.
Okay, well. Okay, let's go to our written correspondence, please. Somebody, if you see it before me, tell me. Uh, well, we have a letter from, this is John. He's already talked. We have Justine, who's already done this. Is there any other correspondence I'm not seeing?
That's late correspondence.
That's late. That's why I'm late on this.
Yeah, in the packet, there was a lot about pickleball.
Pickleball from Sally Miller? Yeah, I, I'm, I'm questioning about North Ocean Avenue. North Ocean Avenue?
Yeah, South Ocean.
She's got her south.
Yeah, I, I think she meant to, yeah, she's got her directions.
Okay.
Although there is a report on.
Oh, I.
North Ocean's one.
Okay, well.
There's a sports court, I know. So I thought you just west of Dick FedEx place in there. Yes.
So anyway, we have a letter from Ellen Prendergast. Ellen Prendergast. Kelsey Grouse. Susan Hoffman. And they're all opposed to pickleball courts in residential areas. Alan Langton is against. And the property owner is Terry. And then we have a Walter Hamer has got a whole printout on the playful pickleball down in Napa Community Court now open. So those are our correspondence. Moving on.
Also, if I may.
Is there?
Uh, there was one by Deanna Nanceel as well. Uh, dated July twenty-third about an encamp commissary plan. And I just wanted to point out to make sure that, you know, that Garrett did respond to those items here on his sheet. And notice on page two and three, his responses are on blue.
Okay.
So we can read through that if you'd like. And if you have any questions, also.
And that's on the public side where, where folks can, you don't need to.
Yeah, that was gone, that went out to the public as well.
So, so Garrett's response to the issue?
Is it blue? Okay.
All right, thank you for pointing that out. I did not see that in mind. We got a nice letter from South County Community that food bank donation. You're right, we did get a nice letter from that. Okay, let us move on to is there anyone on the public screen who wants to address the council at this time? Subject not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance nine four six and ordinance amending the start time of city council meetings.
Mayor Council discussed this in the last meeting. This will be the second reading. What we're looking for is a motion by the council and a second, and then I will read it once by title only. Uh, if it is voted in, this would become an ordinance in thirty minutes.
I request a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance nine four six, reading once by title only. Sorry.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to clarify, it was in minutes and I just want to clarify to be sure. This is making the council start time six P M. But, but the way it is written, it allows you some leeway to potentially start a public hearing before six P M. And it's to allow you a little bit of leeway as far as that option. Is that correct?
I don't see that being in this writing here.
It's not written, but in the past, and Chad Jacobs could maybe chime in here. Peter Watts said, at the consensus of a council, you can make an adjustment to the meeting time as long as you properly notice it. If it's something that you're going to do all of the time, then you would want to go ahead and change it through ordinance as we have. But according to Peter, in the past, if you would want to make a change to the meeting times and say have a five o'clock because we have a hearing and a lot of business to get through starting at six, you are able to do that.
He's able to do that because we're not all here to make a consensus on something like that when you all are building the agenda.
That's correct. I'm not sure that it would need to be in a meeting, but again, Chad, do you have anything?
Yeah, generally speaking, most cities don't necessarily set their start time by ordinance. And there's nothing that precludes you from doing that. Um, the council typically, and I'm not familiar with the council rules and I apologize for that. But typically within the council rules, you will have language that sets forth who sets the agenda. As part of that process, they would have inherent authority to sort of move that time, as Peter was suggesting, to the extent that you need to do so to accommodate a more full agenda. We could certainly add language to this particular ordinance to make that flexibility express. Um, but I think it is inherent in the authority that's granted to the, the mayor, the city administrator, whomever has the authority to set the agenda.
In this case, it's the mayor.
Correct, okay.
No further questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chad.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion. Did we get a second? We got a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance nine four six, say aye.
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 Against? Aye. Okay, there's four and one nay.
Chad, when I looked this up online, I can see several spots where it says that meetings start at seven o'clock. Can we just make sure that somebody goes through and does a research and make sure all of, everything online is updated?
Yeah, we'll probably get it back in the beginning of the week. It'll be there for the remainder of the street. And the next week we'll be able to.
Make a good post, blow out on the blocks.
All right. Moving on. Ordinance nine four seven and ordinance amending text of the city of Gerhardt zoning ordinance, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, so this is the second reading, nine forty-seven, amending the city of Gerhardt zoning ordinance, section three ten flood hazard overlay. Am I the right one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You didn't leave the title.
Yeah, so I was giving this synopsis. Uh, council did unanimously approve this ordinance at the July city council meeting. No new information has been received. I see where you're going with that. Maybe we go back a little bit to the last ordinance and I will read it once by title only as requested by the council.
Thank you, Justine, for catching that. All right.
Thank you.
For a roll of newspaper texts.
Yeah. Ordinance resolution, second reading, uh, and ordinance amending the start time of the city council meetings.
Thank you very much. Now moving again to the same ordinance. We know what it is. Can I get a motion for nine four seven, second reading? By title only?
Motion to approve ordinance nine four seven, ordinance amending the text of the city of Gerhardt, so. Flood hazard overlay zone.
Although, uh, can I get a second, please?
One second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for Garrett. He's still with us?
Yes, he is.
All right, please. So what's going on with B? And what happens to us if we don't opt for B? I don't, I don't know where this is at and what's going to happen with the city.
Sure. So option B is the option that FEMA directed all cities to um, adopt and implement by August first twenty twenty-five. But that date has passed. Um, we don't have new information from what we've shared with you in July and June, which is that it appears that many cities and counties have not taken action to adopt a new ordinance, uh, consistent with FEMA's request. Um, a legal action filed by several local governments that together call themselves Oregonians for floodplain protection that sought to delay this requirement and modify the requirement and what's required, um, has not been resolved. There was a hearing set for late in May on that in federal court and it was um, canceled, the judge said, so that the parties could negotiate with one another. And that hasn't been resolved. Uh, ultimately, you know, okay, so, so there's some, you know, there's some jeopardy in not taking action and doing what FEMA says we're supposed to do. That being said, um, we're not alone in not having taken that action yet. Um, and there's also, um, I guess our, our, our prior attorney, Peter Watts, felt comfortable with the direction that we're headed in for now. Um, I can also offer that. And staff are paying attention for any new developments, both in the federal court case and in seeing what other jurisdictions are doing. Um, so that amendment is ready for you to adopt whenever it feels like it's time to do that. And we do expect that eventually it will have, something like that will have to be adopted. So this was meant to be the pre-implementation compliance measures. That's the PICOM. Pre-implementation, meaning that it's implementation that comes before the final um, environmental impact statement and final rulemaking uh, between FEMA and the National Marine Fisheries Service, which is expected to occur later this year. And that then they would, they would require full implementation, you know, like sometime next year. So this is supposed to be something that we're, we're getting started on. And I think that that's probably moving forward. Although, you know, the, the land, the it's, it's probably like increasingly hard to predict what happens at the federal level these days. We should never really, you know, claim to know what's going to happen. So I'll, I'll just offer that, you know, FEMA's direction hasn't changed. This was supposed to be adopted by August first. Um, and uh, planning commission recommended that you not adopt it until the state uh, or the federal government provide clear direction on how to make the model ordinance clear and objective, consistent with Oregon's clear and objective housing laws. And they haven't done that yet. I don't expect that they will do it. Um, and a substitute for that could be that we see an example from another city on how they've done it successfully. And we haven't seen that yet. And I, you know, I check the news and search for examples every week to see if anything new is happening. And I haven't seen it yet. So.
So Garrett, by, by approving option A, it keeps the residents, property owners in Gerhardt uh, eligible for FEMA flood insurance, correct?
Option A is absolutely a required step to protect uh, the city's status in the flood insurance program and, and property owners um, eligibility for subsidized um, flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, option B is also arguably required to absolutely ensure that everyone will remain eligible for flood insurance. The way that FEMA um, addresses non-compliance is that first they schedule a visit, uh, and some, and they, they communicate and say that you are in jeopardy of losing your um, your status in the National Flood Insurance Program. You need to correct this issue now. Okay, so that hasn't happened yet with regard to the Endangered Species Act pre-implementation compliance measures, option B. Um, and if it did, we would, of course, would respond quickly to that kind of a notice and that kind of communication. Um, option A is meant to correct communication just like that, that occurred in twenty twenty-three. And we were, they gave us until uh, twenty twenty-four to correct it. And then they announced PICOM. And we thought, oh, let's, let's do, let's correct that issue and do the PICOM requirements together. And then FEMA, you know, changed what they were asking for and changed their deadlines multiple times. And ultimately, planning commission decided, let's decouple these two things. Let's go ahead and get option A adopted. And let's try to get some more clarification from the state and federal government um, and see a clearer trend in what peers. um, and see a clearer trend in what peer cities are doing before we adopt option B.
Can we have Chad Jacobs weigh in on this also, please?
Sure, um. I can tell you that the cities that we work with have taken both approaches. Um, so there's not necessarily, as Garrett's been explaining, there's not necessarily a consistent approach throughout the state. Uh, you know, there, there is some risk, as Garrett was explaining, that if you don't move forward, uh, that that could jeopardize the ability to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, and I think that has been enough for some jurisdictions to say, let's go ahead and move forward, knowing the idea that, you know, as with any land use ordinance, you can still go back and amend it later on if things change. I believe that there's other jurisdictions who have sort of taken the approach that with this new administration in place, that this is, seems not to be a high priority that they have not seen, nor do they anticipate seeing any enforcement action by the current administration on this issue. And so they're willing to sort of wait it out. Um, as Garrett said, we can't say for certain what this administration is gonna do. It seems like things change daily with the current presidential administration, so it's really impossible to, to predict with any certainty where this may come out. Um, and so it's really just a risk assessment for you all about whether you want to move forward at this point or not. As I said, if you move forward, you can always come back and amend it later. If you decide not to move forward and we get a notice of non-compliance, you can go ahead and enact it. It seems like it's pretty much ready to go. So, you know, there, there is some ability to wait there if you're willing to take that risk.
You got something?
Yeah, just, um, Chad, I believe that what Peter told us was that there was risk either way. Um, that if we move forward with clear or unclear rules, trying to comply with unclear rule, unclear rules, and, um, the plaintiffs prevailed in this case, and in the course of moving forward with unclear rules or trying to abide by them, we made some properties unbuildable and as a result, landowners lost money or lost value in their property or lost the building. That could also be a risk for us. Um, is, is that your understanding also?
Yeah, I mean, that, that issue is a little more complicated and, and I'd be happy to, you know, have uh, the land use experts in our office provide you with some advice, but the, the short answer is that, um, there's federal preemption issues here related to whether and to what extent, you know, federal law can require us to do certain things that may conflict with state law. And so there's absolutely risk. I don't want to, you know, disagree with Peter in that regard, but I think there's also um, defenses to that risk that don't necessarily exist on the other side. And what I mean by that is if we're not in compliance, the federal government can basically say, nope, you don't get to participate in the flood insurance program. And there's not really much that we can do about that. If the property owners sue us, one of our defenses is that, you know, federal law, because of the supremacy clause, preempts the state law related to clear and objective standards, so therefore that's not a basis for us to, to, um, you know, be sued upon. There's no guarantee in any of that, um, you know, but that would be a defense that we would have. And so it's a, it's a little more nuanced than just saying, you know, that the risk exists on both sides. Um, I think there's, you know, it's, it's hard to measure those risks without sort of knowing exactly what's happening um, on the ground at any given moment, but, uh, you know, as a sort of ten thousand foot level analysis, you know, the risk here to me is that, um, you know, the federal government, because it's so unpredictable, you don't know when or if they're gonna come in and say something, so you may have to move forward. Uh, if, if you decide not to do anything and they tell you that there's, um, non-compliance issues. If you decide to move forward and, you know, someone, you know, turns around and goes through the process and, you know, claims that it's not clear and objective, so therefore it can't be applied, we can also address that issue as we go through the land use process. So in essence, this is a very long-winded way of saying that there's, there is some flexibility moving forward, no matter which option you choose, to be able to address the risks when they arise. Um. You know, I, I, I wish I had a clear answer for you. Not my, my best debut for you all, but there's just not a clear answer here to say, absolutely go this way or the other. I think for you all, this really comes down to a policy decision related to risk as far as one, do you want to just wait and see what happens with the federal government? And if they come in and say non-compliance, go ahead and move forward with an ordinance that you have ready to go. Or two, go ahead and adopt this tonight. Know that you're in compliance. Know that there's no risk there from the federal government. And if someone comes in with a land use application where this becomes an issue, we can try to address it then. We just don't know if any of those land use applications are gonna come in. Likewise, we don't know what the federal government is gonna do, which is why at this point you can only sort of look at this risk from a ten thousand foot level as opposed to, you know, having exact risks. Very anxiety. I'm sorry.
So. So we're having a discussion about this, right?
We're asking a question in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I don't feel comfortable taking the risk of not adopting this. I feel bad.
Not adopting option B?
No, correct. I don't feel comfortable taking that risk.
Of not adopting B, but we're not talking about B. We're only on A.
We're only talking about A.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, A is what we have.
But don't we have the option right now of adopting A and reading?
It, it would start another process because we have not had B as a reading yet.
Okay.
So all we're talking about is A. Um, I agree with you. If that's what you want to talk about is it would be irresponsible not to have the protection of just saying, we do have something for FEMA and don't take us off your flood insurance. And so that's the way I, I would go with it.
Right, but if we go ahead and just say, okay, we're just gonna adopt A tonight, and that does not put us in compliance with, with what FEMA has requested. As opposed to, can we say, okay, well, we wanna be in compliance, so we're gonna adopt A and B tonight? Can we do that? I don't know if we can do that.
I don't believe we can by title only on, uh, because we haven't discussed it, read it, and we don't have it in front of us. So it could be brought up on an agenda by the next month, but in the meantime, if we get A, then we, what?
Oh, Garrett is ready to say something when you're done.
Okay, Garrett.
I just wanted to offer that you did have a hearing on both options A and B, and so did the planning commission. So it's, it's a question of whether the, I, I don't understand the the rules of, of, of first and second readings, but, but hearings have occurred, uh, so. You can.
And that was with the planning commission, correct?
Yeah, and then you had a hearing, um.
On A and B?
Yeah, B was before you as well. Yeah.
Okay.
You vote, you vote, you did a, I think a first reading to approve A. Yeah. After the hearing.
The planning commission is recommending A.
Well, we do have the motion for A in a second, so is there any other discussion on A? I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I hear no nays. So A passes. We can come back to B on next month's agenda.
What's your vote, Chad? Are you abstaining?
No, I voted aye.
You vote, okay.
All right.
And I'd have to look at the timeline. I think we can do that. I think that Garrett has done most of the work that would be for option B. If we're to bring another ordinance, Garrett, you can make that by September?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry for not asking you first, Garrett, in town.
That makes me feel a little bit better because then even though we're not in compliance, at least we have shown that we are bringing this to the next meeting and Garrett's working on it then, so that feels better to me.
Okay, as long as you feel better.
I'm answered.
And Mr. Mayor and Justine, I'd like to read this once by title only.
Yes.
If you're done with discussion. I'd like to know what ordinance you're doing.
They're in the losses. I believe.
They're the ones that are most impacted by this.
Yeah. Henry, when I talked to him, was talking that he was in one of the lead opponents or pro opponents of fighting FEMA and, uh, was looking for volunteers to support their suit.
Well, because, I mean, they were, I mean, they, they really had the rug pulled out of my rite though.
Oh, they did.
Yeah, they have no choice.
They're talking eighteen hundred lots or something like that, that they were gonna lose.
Most of the, most of their affordable or moderate priced homes.
So would now be an appropriate time?
Yes, it would be.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is ordinance nine four seven, an ordinance amending the text of the city of Gerhard zoning ordinance, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have to put A in there or anything like that.
No, that ordinance is A.
Okay. Moving on, second read of ordinance nine four eight, an ordinance granting a franchise to Quest Corporation, DVA CenturyLink QC to operate and maintain a telecommunication telecommunications system in the city of Gerhard.
Make a motion to approve ordinance nine four eight, reading once by title only.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor. An ordinance granting a franchise, franchisee to Quest, branch to Crest Corporation, DVA CenturyLink QC on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, CenturyLink, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Gerhard, Oregon.
Man, you've got some words in there I don't see. All right, moving on, ordinance nine four nine, an ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Gerhard by applying a floating zone to change five thousand square feet of property from R two medium density residential to C one neighborhood commercial. We have had, um, discussion. Uh, does anyone want to make a motion? We can have more discussion if you feel that's applicable to this.
I make a motion to approve ordinance nine four nine by reading once by the title only.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read that once by title only.
Thank you. Takes to the end of the meeting.
Ordinance number nine four nine, an ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Gerhard by applying a floating zone, change five thousand square feet of property from R two medium density residential to C one.
Well, there you are.
Because we happen to a nicer piece of property. We were a nicer person. Thank you for serving.
Years ago, that was all in the C one.
Yeah, okay. We have a good, to back to the shop. I love to do, okay, thank you so much. Thank you very much. Good luck.
All right, now we're going to old business. Anyone wishing to comment may do so by raising their hand. You get three minutes. Anyone wishing to comment? Anyone on TV who raises their hand has a three minute time to comment on public safety building next steps. I'm seeing no hands raised anywhere. Chad, synopsis, please.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, July twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, work session, the city council discussed several options related to the next step for the public safety building project. Those include conducting a community survey, hosting an additional town hall, placing a bond measure on the November twenty twenty five ballot, or delaying the bond measure to the mid twenty twenty six election. I've also attached the document, uh, public safety building ballot timing options that outlines the financial and strategic implications of both the timeline, of each timeline, including inflation impacts, interest rate considerations, and public engagement strategies. At this time, council is asked to reach a consensus and provide staff direction on how to proceed.
Chad? We're gonna find out A, how much it costs to put it on November ballot, and B, if there's a fee that we could put off from that.
Uh, I did, I believe that the November ballot put it on there because we'd be the only ones on that would be about seventy five hundred dollars is an estimate. And, uh, the date that we would need to withdraw by would be November five. Or excuse me, back over a bit. Let me just double check that here.
Did you get a hundred percent of your money back, Robin?
Uh, not necessarily, no.
I actually couldn't find it withdrawal day.
It was, yeah, I've got it.
Business September sixth, okay. There.
Okay. So we would, we would need to submit a ballot title by August fifteen. Then there would be ballot title challenge process, ten business days of publication. And then the SEL eight oh three date is September fourth. That is the date you can draw. Then I didn't ask specifically if we would receive a refund back for the elections process. But in the past, we've had conversations and it depends on where they're at in the process, similar to what Gerhard would do with, um, planning issues. If they withdraw, but we spent staff time, we would amend the amount of the bill. So September four is when the SEL eight oh three would do. We'd have to withdraw before then.
It's the eight oh two, I think. City, not district. Same date, though.
What's our next city council meeting? It's a date.
I think it's September third.
Is it the day before that?
Don't. I'm not writing that in stone or anything.
What's our next city council meeting?
I put it up right now. It is September third.
September.
So extensively, just trying to recap this, we can put it on the November ballot and then have another discussion with the next city council meeting. Extensively, right?
You'd have to have another council meeting before August fifteenth for the ballot title.
Yes, so Chad Jacobs and I had a discussion. Uh, we would need to do a special meeting between now and the fifteenth to have a full discussion on that, by ballot title, so. Uh, and I thought if you talk to him at that space, if I'm, I'm for the city council meeting, yeah, of Chad Jacobs, I don't know, I don't make that happen.
And you, according to our packet, you have something prepared in case we decide to go that direction. Would you need to massage it?
Yeah, we're gonna need to massage it. It wasn't as accurate as I would have liked it. It was a first take by Peter. And I think that a few things have changed in the narrative that need to be addressed.
So knowing this council and our pattern, I would say we're talking at least two meetings because we'll get it, we won't like it, we'll wanna make changes, and we'll make so many changes that we'll need to come back and go back and like.
It's a fairly short document and it can be, um, massaged and changed at that particular period of time, but that is a potential.
Chad, is that your, is that your take also?
Yeah, I, I think the important thing to remember about ballot titles is there's very specific word limits under state law. So when you talk about the summary, which is the, the portion explaining it, you can only have a hundred and seventy five words. So, you know, the council, while you can certainly massage it and edit it, that means you have to stay within that word limit. So, for example, if we propose something with a hundred and seventy four words, if you're gonna edit a lot, you're gonna have to subtract words and add words, and that's usually a, a longer process. So, you know, the council's gonna be doing that as a body. It's gonna take a significant amount of time. And so you may need two meetings depending on how much time you want to put into it.
All right.
What, what I'm not hearing is, is talks about what we would do if we don't put it on the ballot. What does that mean if we don't put it on the ballot? What do, what are people hoping that we do? What's the timeline? What is, what are we looking at? I'm not going that direction, so I can't respond to your comment.
Well, if we're not.
I can tell you the things I would do if we were moving forward.
Okay, let's hear it.
Let's talk about that. Okay. Uh, I think we need to do a survey. I think we need to do it in-house to save money. Most of what I heard in terms of public comments was that approximately twenty thousand dollars that we were, uh, given as an amount for our professional. given as an amount for our professional review was probably a little too much considering our amount of money we have to spend at this point. Um, I think we should do it in-house. I think we should, uh, uh, Chad can figure out a small amount of money and he was talking about several thousand dollars. We would need to have preliminary results back um, before September four. Enough to give us, to inform us to have a good feel for whether or not this could possibly pass in November. And we have a couple, we have a, we have numbers that we've been given in terms of, uh, likely support and also, uh, not numbers on lack of support that can give us guidance to that. I believe that council needs to resolve to continue to work on the most cost effective and resilient modern fire station possible. And we need to do it as soon as possible because costs will continue to go up even if we downscale the project in any way. You know, there are other things that we've talked about doing, trying to get a variance from the state on the, uh, on the building code in a tsunami area. I mean, it's just something we can do or do diligence on. Um, resolve to go forward in November. And I don't have anything to base this number on. I said twenty million in bonds. Expense is greater than that would have to be sourced through a fee such as a vacant home fee or some other fee if we can come up with something or another fundraising mechanism. Um, you know, I have more things here with regard to public outreach. I think we need to modernize. I think we need to get on Instagram, reach people who don't read the blog uh, because they're busy, they're working nine to five, they've got family, they've got kids. We have a lot of non retired folks in this town too. And we need to work harder on reaching them and, uh, increasing community awareness about how badly we need to get this project done. That's all I got. Unless you've got questions.
So Chad, is that something that's even doable? Get a survey put out?
By September four?
Yeah.
It would be difficult. It would be, I'd need to talk to the staff. We'd have to put everything. Uh, a, a few things aside, I mean, once we get the survey designed and printed and or put out onto a digital format, then we'd have to administrate it, get it out there, bring in the results. Uh, if we're not using a professional company, then we would have to use some other methods to go ahead and bring those results in, tally them appropriately. Uh.
Could you come along with that?
I mean, everybody's busy at the moment. Then I'm just going through the process of how that would look. Then, um, we'd have to bring that in and discuss those, um, readings and that, those surveys with the city council. And we'd have to do that all before September fifth or fourth, excuse me. Um, is it possible? Yeah, with a lot of effort, it would be possible.
But we have questions. You've written some questions.
We have. I think that the council would want to come together on some of those to make sure we're in the right place. And we may want to spend some time with somebody who could help us through some of those questions. Uh, only because we have been, um, surveys are difficult. You know, and the way that you run them and what the data is to try and get them. Could we do it? Yes, it would be an all, all hands on and, uh, we would have to push pretty hard to get that done for September four.
I think we might need that information.
Chad, if I could. Can I just add one more thing? I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I just want to make sure that you all are aware that once you place the measure on the ballot, there's restrictions on what the city can do as far as surveys are concerned. And so depending on what type of information you're trying to solicit, that may impact your ability to actually conduct the survey in the way that you're planning. It doesn't mean that you can't do a survey at all and you can certainly gather some information, but you have to be careful not to engage in any sort of political advocacy either for or against, um, the measure, uh, once it's been placed on the ballot. And so that's gonna impact the type of wording that you can use in the questions and the type of information that you're gathering.
Would the Secretary of State be able to assist us with that by reading, uh, going through the survey and giving us?
They can, but I can't guarantee how quickly they'll turn that around for you. And given that you're talking about trying to get the survey out and results back within a month, that may, they may not be able to meet those sorts of deadlines. Sometimes they turn those around within a day or two. Sometimes they take two or three weeks.
And then the only other thing about that is, is just not to get away and possibly, so that adds a little bit of, uh, making this a little bit more problematic, but also, you know, this November is, is considered one of the most dangerous type, uh, times to go for a vote, uh, for anything. And that's why most communities, uh, avoid it and that's why we are doing a lot of ballots as well.
Dangerous because of low turnout?
Low turnout usually means that the opposing side, they'd be better organized generally. That's just the way most cities operate, it seems. Would be more successful.
How much of a strain is it gonna be to push this forward on the staff?
We would have to forego some of the other things that would be needed to get this done. I'm not sure exactly what that would be.
So this is a strain on staff. This is a question that the Secretary of State can even review our questions and get them back to us in enough time for a survey to be viable for us to withdraw if we get negative feedback.
And then, and then we'd also be back into the ten day appeal period. That would go on as well, but I think that's a separate timeline. So that starts the date that we submit in August fifteenth, so.
So and after August fifteenth, we're shut down as far as.
Gets a little bit more difficult.
So if, and I'm throwing this out as an idea, but if we delay until May, we incur some extra costs, but we have the time to do it right and get the answers that are out there, develop questions without feeling like we're cutting off something because we can't figure out how to ask it correctly.
I think we definitely have to come up with a solid plan. It would still be a push, but it's, it's definitely more workable. Um, to get all that worked out and to have the conversation that we want to have. And if we were to do a survey, one of the benefits of a survey is that we really do have the opportunity to find out what people are thinking, getting ideas, asking them questions in all different directions. And then we can take that information and tailor it for the May election to say, okay, we heard you. This is the direction that we were gonna head. Or these are the changes that we're gonna make if we make any, if you make any changes.
Right. But we can have outreach all during that time period where we're gonna be shut down in no time at all, having any outreach besides the council.
August fifteenth.
Our blog will be shut down.
You can have certain communication, precise communication.
Right.
And communication that we would probably filter through the Secretary of State to make sure that we're.
Oh, yeah. We don't want to be fined at the same time as doing something. Well. I would like to make a motion, but I would like the other motion withdrawn, if that's possible. Or you want to have opposed?
I think I made a motion.
You have been motioned.
I didn't make a motion. I was just, uh, speaking.
Just speaking?
It says we just have to reach consensus. Do we have to vote? No.
Well, how do you know if you got consensus? You just go, yeah?
Oh, I can live with that.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Dana.
I just want everybody to remember that by moving it to May, we're taking our, uh, we can reasonably anticipate that the cost of thirty three million dollars that set everybody back on their heels is going to increase to thirty five million dollars. And that to have a professional survey on top of that would be another twenty thousand dollars. And, um, that makes a very, very heavy lift even heavier. Um, and I'm wondering what, again, I would ask, what information is it we're looking to get from the survey? Are we looking to get, um, a different direction, something that is better? A, a way to reduce costs that we have not imagined already? Because I think we've imagined all of the, all of the scenarios, sort of looking into leasing an already existing building for public works. What, what, what are our other options? We've, we've presented it, or not we, but the city has presented it to the public several times at different price points.
We have. And, you know, when we started the town halls, we've never broken a hundred but one time. And we got eighteen hundred voters. We, we have to have some kind of outreach where we, we get a thousand people that are interested in responding to us. And I believe that's only gonna happen by word of mouth and participating in the survey and seeing if there is enough support. Because I saw the demoralized firemen, uh, when the bond failed the last time. I mean, we had six of them quit. And, you know, I believe people understand we have to have something. I just think we haven't reached the message that will work with people, where they will understand and support what we're trying to do. Because what we're trying to do is the same thing that we're trying to do up at the, the cottages. We're trying to build something that's gonna last. And I'm, I don't want to preach because we all know this. It's but that's why I would put it off to May, so we could really do an outreach to the voters.
Okay, well, I, I understand that. But again, I want to reiterate my feeling that putting out to the vote is your ultimate survey. You're going to get information back from that. Wouldn't that money be better spent? If you're saying, or if we as leaders of this community are willing to say, yes, we hear you, you don't want to spend the money and you think there are other options, but we have gone through the public process, we've done everything we can, we cannot force people to come in and participate if they don't want to participate. All we can do is do our best effort to, to gather information and get the will of the people. And we gave them every opportunity now to turn around and, and say, okay, well, we're gonna have a survey and based on the results of that survey, all of this effort and everything we've done may be just a waste of of time and money, um, without knowing exactly what is your end goal with the survey. Uh, you're saying you want to get information. But, okay, then what are you going to do with the information?
Um, I think we need to work at this situation. So the information that we get, I mean, if we get seventy or eighty percent of respondents saying absolutely no way, there's no reason to go to the bottom. You know, we gotta go back to the drawing board and figure out what do we gotta do for them? Is go out and buy a different piece of property or suggest something else? But I think waiting till May is not going to it's going to cost us two million dollars. Yes. Okay? I don't see that we need to go with a professional holster. I can, I will show you, uh, some questions that a professor did in forty five minutes using manipulated AI. That is just amazing. What, and it comes out with, do you want it in Spanish? Do you want it in a, a dorded door presentation? Do you want it as a a speech to give at a city council meeting? I mean, it's really, but I hate this, what the AI did in that forty five minutes was amazing. And the questions, you know, they're they're not leading questions. They are neutral questions that bring out information that can be done. It can be done by people that know how to manipulate it and ask the right question or tell it what to do in a special or a different way than I do.
Okay. I understand that. So let's, let's talk about, um, let's just what it. So does anybody at this table believe that there really is an alternative to rebuilding the existing structure?
Yes.
And what, what, so let's talk about it. What do, what do you think is the alternative?
I, I, I think if you think outside the box, I'm just gonna throw this out. If you think outside the box, you put police and public service over there, they're not critical infrastructure.
Police is.
Police, yeah, police.
Yeah, they're.
They definitely.
Unfortunately.
No, but you know what? But let's, let's be positive here because this is the first time we've, we've really had a there are no bad suggestions. We need to, we need, you, you're right. We need to, and we need to have these conversations public because the, the, the public is having these conversations without us participating. And they don't know the background. They don't know, like, for example, people want us to sign up with Seaside. And they don't understand that Seaside needs us here as much as we need them. So even if we signed up with Seaside, what it would do then is it would increase our costs because we would have to sign on to their their staffing model. We'd have, and they're paying round the clock. But no paid staff is going to work out of that building without reporting this to OSHA. That is a guarantee. That building will still have to be corrected and it doesn't solve their problem. So you still need to meet the OSHA requirements about giving them a decontamination area and yada, yada, yada. Um, larger building and everything else to, to come up to modern needs. Um, and on top of that, if we, if, let's say Seaside were interested. Seaside's not interested. And I'll tell you why Seaside's not interested. Seaside has a proven track record of paying for their infrastructure in a timely manner while it's still affordable. And they do not see us as those folks. But if we signed up with them, we would be asking them to help us pay for the infrastructure we would still need. And they don't see why they should have to pay for our infrastructure when they've already paid for our. But if they did, if they saw something in it for them and they wanted to sign up for us, Seaside has, according to Clatsa County's website, they have five thousand and nine registered voters. We have sixteen hundred and twenty nine registered voters. For the rest of whatever, as long as we were in a district with them, they would outvote us and we would never get our will on, on anything. Plus, it would cost us more. I don't, I think those are the kinds of public conversations that people need to have. Other numbers, things to keep in mind. And I know that you guys want to wrap this up, but keep this in mind. There are people out there that think that we could just do some minor remodeling and it might cost five million dollars. Okay, so five million dollars, how long would the length of that bond be? And would be, would, would we get enough juice from that squeeze to make it work well? Or would people say, well, we invested our money, we're not interested in investing any more money, especially for the length of the bond? So you'd have to make it a very short bond. So let's say we, we said we're gonna do a five million dollar remodel, even if we could, at five years, um, I think we, we looked at it, it would be a dollar fifty seven per, is that what you? No, couldn't be. Over for five years, for five years, not twenty years, because you couldn't do it for twenty. Because that station, the size of that station, there's no way you could do a remodel to make that station sustain us for twenty years. You gotta remember that station. Yeah.
Yeah, estimations are a five year bond at five million.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which would add one point one five million in, in season costs. Uh, it would be a dollar fifty seven per household. Five year at ten million. Be three dollars and fifteen cents per house. Currently, we're looking at about that for thirty three million in twenty years.
So if you're doing a remodel and you're not really addressing all of the problems with that building, you can anticipate you're gonna have to go back and touch that building somewhat sometimes too. So the bond that you get has to be either five or ten years and ten years is really pushing it. Because you also have to remember that from the day that we say go and the day that a bond gets passed, you still are looking at up to two years of processing time, you know, design time and everything to get, to get even started on. So you're really looking at seven to twelve years. So that's a lot of money. And I'm just gonna leave it at that. You guys leave it at what you, you know, I, I understand what the will is, but I just want, I'm, I'm.
Well, I, I understand that we're still in talks with the people who want to develop pockets. And, well, you all know how I feel about putting a fire station on high ground. Being as I've been interested in resilience. Resiliency for about fifteen years now. Uh it still makes pretty good sense, and I'm understanding that they still wanna give us property to do that. That doesn't mean that that building has to go away. That doesn't mean that that building can't still serve hot dogs on the Fourth of July. Or the Fireman's Ball on May twenty-sixth. Or. Have a town hall or a pickleball court. Or a town meeting place. Whatever we want it to be. It doesn't have to not be the face of the fire station.
Okay, well. Would you guys, ladies, you have something to say? Sharon, go ahead.
Well, I didn't finish.
You wanna finish?
What I was saying.
Well, then. Do I have?
Okay, so I didn't understand that police has to be critical structure. Um so. I think. Police and fire goes up to the cottages. It's free land, and Chad told me that it only has to be remediated to fifteen feet.
I, for the soils, the previous plan was down to fifteen, twelve to fifteen feet. With the remediation, because the quality of the soil is up there. Here it's sixty.
Right, so that may save us quite a bit of money right there. We still, we can figure out what to do with that building, or Public Works can still stay here. Uh we don't redo City Hall at this point, but we gain a little bit more space when police leaves. Um I just think. I know everybody wanted the fire station to be down here. I know a lot of people wanted that, but now with these numbers that we got in, we, I think we need to rethink that.
I got, I have one thing that I wanna say about, about the cottage property, okay? You're gonna have to go, you, you're gonna have to have an entrance to the, to the highway. You have to go across the swamp. In the event, listen to me, ladies, in the event of a seismic event. It's gonna affect this building here. You won't be able to get to the highway there, because it's gonna be a lake. The only way into Gearheart. Is down through. Pine, Pine Ridge, okay?
That'd be alright.
Yeah.
It's higher than the highway.
You have, you've got a creek on one side and a swamp on the other. Okay?
I understand.
Just a minute, who's to say that the culvert there, the road, isn't gonna be devastated? So how do you get from, from there into the city?
You still have your question.
It's all about location, right? It's all about response time, and anybody, just a minute, and anybody that's telling you. That lives over there, the response time is not gonna, is gonna be the same from, from the cottages to South Gearheart is full of bony.
You don't ask Carrie last week, how many people live in his neighborhood down there? He said one other person.
One other couple.
One other couple, excuse me.
Okay, well. Obviously, there's some. Variance in thinking, um. I would. Like to make a motion that we hold the bond until May and get this worked out and think outside the box. And come up with something that's going to. Not cost people fifty-five million dollars in twenty years. Payments. So. There you are.
You know, I, 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 Dana, I'm, I'm so with you on finding out from the voters. By putting it on the November ballot. I don't think, hearing all this, I don't think we should burden staff that way. I really don't think we should do that to staff. I, I would not feel good about doing that.
I don't, I don't, I think you're. Um, maybe I haven't been communicating well. I get that we're not ready for the November ballot. And I'm mad as hell about it. But I think that's on us. We've had these numbers since April, since May, and we could have worked on this. And yet, we have these conversations, and every time we, we talk a little bit, we say, okay, we gotta cut it off, we gotta go. Nobody really talks, nobody makes any decisions, and we're just listening to. We're just not moving forward. We're not, we're not communicating well, and, and it's very frustrating to me.
Right, we're just rehashing the same thing over and over.
And, and I get that we're not ready for November. And I don't think it's going to pass in May. And I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay.
Um and I don't know what the solution is, because I've given three years of my life to this. This was my goal, was to fulfill the social contract we have with the folks that are there for us. To make sure that, you know, they get a safe place to work, and that was my goal. And now I'm, I'm at the point where I'm, I'm very disheartened. I blame us, I blame us.
I do too, absolutely. I absolutely agree with you, um. But it's so complex. There's so many moving parts to this. I mean, I don't think we should beat ourselves up about it.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that, but it is what it is. There's no sense in beating ourselves up about it. We need to move forward, because we can't just throw in the towel. Uh we can't quit, because they can't.
Oh, they can quit, but.
Well, that's, that's the thing. If we just had a day without volunteers, everybody would understand the importance of this, but. It, it is what it is. So I understand we're not ready for November. I wish I could say differently. If the public felt differently, I sure wish that they would communicate that to us and really. Somehow communicate with us in some way other than on a Facebook page where people are like, well, if I still live in Gearheart, this is what I do. I just, true communication, and I don't know that survey is, is the answer, because spending twenty thousand dollars more. On top of a two million dollar increase on a price they already don't like. I, I, that's insane.
Well, I don't think it needs to cost twenty thousand dollars, and like I said, I'll show you these questions. I'll put them in your boxes tomorrow.
Are you saying thirty-five and twenty?
Um did I say, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, but I, I think there is, I think there is some value now to, to going to the people and asking them, do you want us to brush off the old plants? We know you didn't like those. Maybe we brush those off, we make them better to, because not everybody. Voted against it because of the location. Some people voted against it because they thought the money was too much, but now they might think the money was pretty good. There were other people that had a variety of reasons why they didn't vote for it other than just the location. I think that we do need some information on that from the public.
Well, I will reluctantly um second Carrie's motion. But I would amend it to say, if we're gonna wait six months. Council needs to have some sort of consensus to meet frequently. Monthly if we have to.
Outside of city council meetings.
Yeah.
Special council.
Outside, yeah.
Okay.
Work session, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
To keep working on this, because meeting once a month will never get anything done.
Yeah, and we also need to have the survey done.
Yes.
I think, I, I think that we should review the overall. Plan and see if we can't reduce. The size of the building. And. Split off to Public Works. At the City Hall from the. From the, the people that, the people that, that came to the meetings, the people that were really engaged. When the architects came out with the plot, plot plan and everything like that, and they gave them five pounds of sugar to put into a. Two-pound box. They realized at that point how difficult this situation really is. But all these different moving parts, and I think there's, you know, I think that we should do. If we must spend any money, I think we oughta engage the architects and see where we can cut. To try and save, save the cost of the. Of the police and fire station.
So can we set up a work meeting? Do we have money to pay them to come in and set it, come into a work session with us in, in a week or two?
Miss Justin, Miss Justin made sure that we had money left in. Budget. Uh we have about fifty thousand dollars that we can work with that's been budgeted if we need that much. And I have already spoken to them about what the conversations that we're having now, and then they gave options, saying, yes, we'd be happy to help. I think that there's some work to be done, not that we haven't done the work, but if you take a different tack. Maybe there would be something that we can work through. Take a combination of having the discussion also about the ideas that Sharon and Luke line are coming up with as well. You know, at least have that discussion. Clarify it, have it to be public, make sure that people are aware of it, so that they're following with us. I think that also, you know, the city council has been talking to a lot of the residents in town. I think you all have a feeling of how the November election may have gone, or, you know, uh so that's based on misinformation as well. Um so we're not just playing, you know, we're also playing some facts here. Um I think we'd have to come up with a plan before we started having meetings. Of what it is that we wanna do accomplish, how many meetings that's gonna take, and when we are going to do them. I don't think it's a bad idea at all to at least require one meeting a month in addition to our city council meeting. I think that within that work period, and as long as we put enough time aside, we start early enough and we potentially have three-hour meetings, two-hour meetings to do that. We could probably get some place. Um. Yeah.
So would you say that's a consensus for May? Or would you say reluctantly?
Uh now you've got a motion, so I guess we have a. Motion second.
Unless it's withdrawn and we just make a motion to discuss it in two weeks.
I, well, we wouldn't be able to make November for discussing it now in two weeks, so from one way or the other, May is.
I got you, I got you. Yeah, in November's unfortunately, I don't, I don't see November's happening. I wish I could say it was.
Well, even with a motion, I'll withdraw the motion if that's all you want, is a consensus, because it says here consensus.
I did, I reluctantly gave a second, and, and she's given, and you might as well vote unless you have something else.
And I, Carrie, could you, could you verbalize exactly where the motion is, because we had added some corrections?
Added some corrections, yes.
Potential amendment, so I just.
Yeah, it was basically that we go for the May vote, May of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, that, that simple.
And I seconded it, but said council needs to engage on this at least monthly basis.
Right. Is that in there?
Carrie. Uh we can, yeah, that's, I have no problem with that. Would you like me to say it though?
I would.
Okay, the May twenty twenty-six election. Going for the May twenty twenty-six election with. The idea that the council is going to have an additional, at least one meeting more a month in work sessions. As long as it takes to get the job done. I mean, if. I can add all that in.
That's good, yeah.
So do we have a, a universal consensus, or does someone wanna say no?
I'll say no.
Yes.
Carrie.
Mine? Wow, that's the first time.
What we're gonna do is talk.
All right, moving on, we're going to the City Attorney Services. Chad, will you read the? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. This is new business. Anyone wishing to speak for three minutes on new business. City Attorney Services RFP in the TV audience or in the. Live audience, please raise your hand if you wanna speak. You get three minutes. I see none raised, so we're going to move right into the synopsis, Chad.
Uh thank you, Mayor and Council. The council was informed that the July City Council meeting at the City Administrator executed an interim professional services agreement for attorney services with Bury Osner and Hammond. Uh following the unexpected loss of our city attorney, Peter Watson. And RFP was published July second, the closing date of July seventeenth. However, we only received one bid. While the bidder is a peddler. Staff feels it in best interest for the city to amend the current RFP schedule and post again, in the hopes of receiving more bids for comparison. So staff recommends the council via consensus to publish the city attorney services for the RFP again. And we have the timeline for that on the very last page. What that would look like. And I'm hoping, uh I, I did talk to Chad Jacobs a little bit about this, and I'm not sure that he'd see the tentative timeline. I'm hoping he can stay with us. I mean, sure, we would love to have Bury Osner as, uh. As, as, is working for, with us, but you know, their capacity just is not there at the moment. Uh would this timeline work okay for you, Chad?
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
So this is just a communication and consensus of the council that we move forward to republish the RFP, which we can do in the beginning of the week. And to try to get some candidates, uh some more candidates for you to consider.
All right, I go with that.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chad Jacobs, for all the work that you and your team have been doing. You guys have been excellent to work with. Maybe if we delay it longer, oh, never mind.
After this meeting, do not.
That's not like, that's not what I'm trying to do. It's not what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, we might have to send a, a team in to do a grid search to find him after this meeting.
Yes.
Not at all. You guys were great. You guys did really good work.
Okay, right now we'll go to council concerns. Deborah?
I would just like to say that this Saturday at the American Legion Seaside is a memorial for both Bob and Pat McKenna. It starts at one and goes till four. And um all the. Everybody in Gearheart and surrounding area is welcome. Welcome to show up. Thank you for that.
Browns meet flats, music in the park.
And then, yeah, I will be there, and then, yes, what Dana was just talking about. Four o'clock is when the Browns meet flats and the music in the park across the street here is starting here in Gearheart on Saturday. So a little bit of music and some fun there too.
All right, Dana?
No, I've said enough, thank you.
Going forward.
Do you have a concern?
I'm sorry.
You don't need to be sorry for being the way you are.
No, I do have a concern, and my concern is that my friend parked his truck at Wellington a few weeks ago. And had his truck broken into through the lock. Uh and some things of his stolen, including his driver's license and his credit card. Uh he has parked down there for the past ten years since he's lived in Gearheart and has never had a problem to date. Um police obviously are aware of this and are working on it. I, my concern is. Should we put some signage up down there, like?
Don't leave your valuables.
Leave the car. Something.
Can you look into the cost of that?
Be a better place.
I think we could do that.
I think, you know, signs don't hurt, but it's, it's one of those things where it's the world we live in today. Um leaving things and vehicles. Put yourself in risk. But yeah, signage, I mean, it doesn't hurt to always say, you know, it's just a reminder.
Take your valuables.
Yeah.
You know, I agree, absolutely agree with you, obviously, but we, some of us who live in the Gearheart bubble. Assume that we are still in the bubble and. Conduct ourselves accordingly, like not locking our doors when we're home during the day. So, um.
Good dynamic.
Yeah, I was gonna say thanks, Chad.
Yeah.
Uh it's not.
The windows are open for a reason. Okay, is that your only concern? I have no concerns about anything. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, First.
Thank you, Chad. He's gone already.